Wait a second, let me see. Ms. Chase? You're up here.
We got your special seat right down there beside Penny.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Which one one's good first? Ms. Ma.
I know everyone gets the Journal and they have this thing called the West Virginia Unclaimed Properties. And last year Mr. Whittaker was present when Riley Moore came here and presented us with a $10,000 check. This is for this year's claim. I have a check in my hand for $16,008.97 made out to Burford County Commission.
Good.
It goes back into the general fund.
So just be aware and follow those things up because there's funds there belong to the county.
Right. Thank you. All right, Ms. Com.
Thank you. You got any money for it?
I'll give you a kiss and a hug later.
I'd rather have money.
Yeah, that's what they all say. Thank you. Larry Com, Delegate Elect, District 94. Three things, I'll be brief. One, first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to meet with all of you last Thursday with the... And I was pleased that most of our legislative delegation did come and participate. The only follow-up I have when I... Something I mentioned there is I strongly recommend that instead of annualizing that, particularly super subsidy, it really helps to get the needs and concerns early so we can start drafting bills and get our ducks won beforehand. Secondly, I...
I think the biggest change since you was last in the House, if I could, is having Summer Barrett and their organization represent the county council. Does a wonderful job in trying to keep you all informed on what's going on and stuff. That might be the easier way, maybe, but that's going to be up to them.
Yeah, I don't... Philosophically, I was never going to bring this up, philosophically, I have a problem with one government hiring a lobbyist to deal with another one, though I know the productivity that comes out of that. But I think that as citizen legislators, regardless of who you have as lobbyists, it's important to deal with them one-on-one rather than... than, rather than just do that.
Mm-hmm. Your title to your pen.
Oh, yeah, not all of them. Secondly, I, I was reading in the, the journal, I think it was the journal, about the, the ongoing issues with reporting on the elections and some of the people who didn't get to vote on the one issue. And I think I've mentioned this to you all before, that I have a couple people that I encourage to be volunteer coworkers. One of them is an international computer specialist and he's come up with some low-hanging proof that might be helpful to change election processes and procedures within the law. And so I'm, him and I, and maybe one other person have got agreement with the county clerk elect, Tony Patrusi, to meet over these issues and see what, what recommendations they made. And from there, what needs to be done maybe to go forward to the Secretary of State and see what other, and then thirdly, I just want to bring to your attention, and I know it's already on your attention because it's on your agenda, but listen carefully to Dr. Joseph DeSoto, who's before you, he's got a lot of ideas, he's a brilliant man, he's a lot smarter than I am. I mean, I just ask people, listen carefully.
It's not saying much.
What's that?
It's not saying much.
Well, I know, I know.
You're the first to admit it. I appreciate it.
Well, I, I see that every morning. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Co. All right, we need a motion to approve, anybody else? I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, we got a little modification at the 11:45 of the MOU at Baker Heights. We'll need to remove that from the agenda, but after that, I move to accept the agenda as modified for Thursday, December the 8th, 2022.
A motion on the floor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, no internal budget revisions?
Yes, sir.
We have some change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Terry Wilson Kramer, as a therapist too, with an annual salary of $70,104 effective January 17th, 2023. A new hire recommendation received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Services for Jedidiah Gregory, Cole Kernan, and Justin Ashby as part-time firefighter slash hazmat techs with an hourly rate of $17.83 effective December 8th, 2022. Letter resignation received from the Circle Clerk's Office for Sue Anna McCurley, or Colleen, I'm sorry, effective November 18th, 2022. Letter resignation received from the Day Report Center for Emma Lard, effective December 31st, 2022. Any questions on the change in status? Tim, he gotta be interviewing people with every day, seems like.
Well, Ms. Lerner has been with us for a while, but she's decided to go back to school. She likes what she's doing. She's a peer recovery coach. She's actually going to go back and finish her degree and hope to come back as a case manager.
I got you. Well, good. All right. Approval minutes, everyone was present except for Mr. Davis. Any changes or corrections on those? County Council calendars. We'll be here next Thursday at 9:30 in the chambers. And then boards and commissions. We have fire board tonight at 6:30 in the chambers here, 2:30 PM LEPC, 5:00 PM Water District, 6:00 PM Airport Authority. On Wednesday, the 14th, 9:30 AM Development Authority, 6:30 PM Roundhouse Authority. Any changes or corrections on any boards and commissions? We have a council check in there from the county clerk's office. Any questions on that? entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
To move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Barnhart, Boarding, a meeting report, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. As you may have noticed, I wasn't at the legislating, well, I had lunch.
I was gonna say, you was there.
Well, free lunch, you know, sign me up. But after that, I went and attended the local government advisory committee to the Chesapeake Executive Council, which are the governors of the various states who are members of the Chesapeake Commission. And the meeting was, as usual, geared towards Norfolk, Virginia, and tidal flooding and that sort of stuff. But I was able to give a presentation on our quality of life programs, the 70 acres farm and the 10 acres that are there at the Spring Mills and Inwood Park, and talked about corporations and pilot agreements and naming rights, which, you know, is a wonderful thing that corporations do. So that was my meeting this week.
All right, good. Mr. Whitaker.
I had no meetings, however, did attend the West Virginia Corp, Corley Board Meeting, which the risk pool is in very good financial condition. We had little over $9 million surplus. We just had our actuary review and they had increased the portion of that IBNR, which is incurred and not reported because of the, the on-take of municipalities. So they increased our IBNR on, on just those items. But that'll come back in, in about two years and be put back into the plus side of the surplus. There will probably be a little bit of an increase. I was telling Mr. Davis, possibly automobiles due to the fact that parts availability, you know, and things, as well as any kind of new construction that's going to be replaced because of the, the cost of materials.
Mr. Davis, have we, saying that, have we thought about upping our coverage on our buildings?
We increase, if we look at it, our coverage is on the market value, so we do increase that every, proportionally every year.
Because, I mean, the ones I'm looking up, looking at, they went up, some of them 100%.
Yeah, we have not increased.
All the improvements we're doing on the building except 50 Baltimore Street, that's, that's a million dollar one right there. So hate to-
Be under insured.
Be under insured on today's replacement codes.
Speaking of buildings, what's the status of 100, whatever that number is?
126.
It's gone.
Is it going?
It's down and city market first filing the drugs every day.
It's just a matter of getting the rubble trucked out now.
Are they going to pave that spot or?
We will eventually. They have to-
Prep it.
Yeah, stabilize it.
Yeah. And then we'll redo that whole, that part.
After all the construction, no other thing?
Right.
Okay.
That's all.
Counselperson, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Planning Commission Monday night. Several minor projects came through, nothing, nothing really major there. Parks and Rec, we met with their Troy Truax on the master plan for Poorhouse and West Quarry Project. Those two projects, I think, are complete and will be delivered, you know, before, shortly.
How often will they update the master plan?
I, I don't know, Jim. I know that they were looking at a, a window of five years and 10 years, so.
Yeah, this is the first master plan, so obviously there are probably holes and omissions and et cetera, et cetera. And I was just wondering how long before they update it or change it or whatever you want to call it.
It's, it's actually, I think it ends up being a 10-year plan. I think that will be looked at again. Honestly, they really need to not put that plan on the shelf. They need to keep it on the desk where it, it can be looked at regularly and discussed about ways to get there.
Well, no, I'm just, I've said this and, and I know that the liability, they look at the liability, but that's a prime spot to have some diving platforms.
There would be, yeah.
I mean, it's probably better to have something that's dumb nice to where people wouldn't get hurt because I'll tell you, people don't want it anyway.
Off the wall. Yeah, there's, there's some concerns. I think that right now, the idea was, because there is some areas of slippage in that area, to be able to secure those areas and keep everything to the north end of the, of the park.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and plus, that's all part of that trail, that walking bicycle trail through there that will eventually be tied into the existing trails that are being created too.
Is this, I know the city's going from Frog Hollow to the Roundhouse. Are they going to go ahead and do it from the, they, they have everything they need to go from Roundhouse to Oakdale now or not?
I, I don't know if they've secured all the right-of-ways, but if not, they're very close to, to being able to do that.
Okay.
Um, let's see here. The water and sewer, we met Tuesday, I'm sorry, Stormwater and Sewer. The, the sewer district, I told you a couple weeks ago that they rebidded the project on the north end at Midway Mobile Home Park. The, the low bid contractor, after discussion, felt as if he was not qualified. So that project was put out for bid again. And those bids will be open on December the 20th, where that particular treatment plant is a package unit and will be decommissioned. And that's also part of the consent decree that project is.
That's right there in Marlin, right?
Yes, sir.
Right down there in Marlin.
There's a church across the road from there that meets sewer.
Well, and there's, there's a additional opportunities there to provide sewer in that area that they're looking at as well. Those meetings, the Stormwater and Sewer District meetings for January, instead of the first and third Tuesday, will now be for, just for January, be switched to the second and the fourth. As you recall, probably a month and a half, two months ago, there was discussion about possible sinkholes at the Lakes subdivision. It's my understanding that there's possibly been a sinkhole identified there that the Stormwater District is working with those involved. And I also brought your attention several weeks ago, the site over in Back Creek Valley that's being dealt with, with DEP, MS4, and Army Corps of Engineers. They are preparing certified questions to be sent to the Supreme Court for a ruling on that. And then those answers will be administered and dealt with by the judge when they're returned.
That's State Supreme Court?
Yes, sir. So there's, there's a lot of stuff, you know, happening.
Okay. I had the ambulance authority last night, talked about the natural financials, very, very stable. Collection is, is doing well. Talked about the run data and that, that the amount of calls coming in is, is 4% less than what it was this time last year, but transports are up 2%. The academy, they, they, they have academy going on. They have 12 people that, a room full of 12 cadets that, that's going to be graduating, which is off the charts. They've partnered up with Blue Ridge CTC and, and they're going to start another program out there. And hopefully, in the first class, they'll have 12 paramedics come out of, which is unheard of. They're starting to, they, they done their org chart and showed the new positions they have to hire to get additional crew in South Berkeley and, and, and everything of that nature. And so, and they're calling, instead of the commercial fee, it's non-residential because not everything coming in would be commercial. So I thought that was appropriate.
Sure.
Doing that, that's the only thing I have to report on there. Any board and commission vacancies? One, one thing I do have to say is the governor will be making an announcement on a business coming in today at noon time. They'll be coming into Berkeley County and, and so good news for the state of West Virginia and Berkeley County, and that will be public information today at noon. All right, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
Honorary councilperson.
Yes, indeed. Today, we have Chase Co. Would you like to come on up here and? He's from Hedgesville High School. So come on over here, guy. And this is your audience today. So tell them what you would like to pursue after high school.
After high school, I plan to go to college and major in clinical psychology. And through clinical psychology, I plan to not only strengthen my community, but also possibly participate in local office and therefore strengthen the community and make it more cohesive as a whole.
Good. So what are your plans in high school right now? What have you been doing there?
My current plans in high school is basically to do as much in the community as I possibly can. I'm the president of the Music National Honor Society, which participates in many community service projects. Just recently, we participated in the 5K Turkey Try as volunteers at James Charles Technical Institute. I am involved in a journalistic pursuit, interviewing and bringing attention to all the small businesses in the area of Hedgesville and Martinsburg.
Pretty, pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Chase, who's your dad?
My father is Samuel Co.
Okay.
Well, if you want to swear, you answer. Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I'm Chase Co.
Do you swear and affirm?
Do you swear and affirm?
That I will uphold the Constitution?
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
That you stay away from the gun.
The same.
That I will work hard?
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities?
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of office of honorary councilperson?
Office of honorary councilperson.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been.
Thank you very much. Penny, will you move this back a little? All right, so have a seat and we'll, we'll get some pictures here shortly.
And if you have comments or questions, fire away.
Jump in.
Yep. This is your day too.
All right, Mr. Davis, it's two minutes before 10, according to that clock. And I got one minute before 10, so let's get started on this bid opening.
Okay. Your bid opening today is for the Dunville addition and renovations. If the council will recall, on Thursday, August the 4th of this year, bids for the addition and renovations to the Dunville were opened and read into public record. At that time, we had only received one bid, and that was from Cooper Building Services out of Frederick, Maryland. And the bid was for $9,076,000. Just as a brief recap, we actually began this project in December of 2020, so it's now been two years since the county decided to renovate this building. As part of the design and engineering, some of the preliminary cost projections for the project, as provided in the spring of 2022, is approximately 6.5 million for the construction. Although we had eight contractors that had picked up plans for the project back in the summer of 2022, several contractors stated that they did not bid on the project due to scheduling conflicts and their inability to align subcontractors. On Thursday, September 8th, 2022, the council accepted the recommendation to reject the bid from Cooper Building Services because of a significantly over budget. uh, to reject the bid from Cooper Building Services because of a significantly over budget and moving forward would not be in the interest of Berkeley County. At that time, you directed us to fine tune the RFP and rebid the project. In early October, the revised RFP was distributed. It was posted on our website and social media platforms. It was also advertised in the Martinsburg Journal on Monday, October tenth, twenty twenty-two. We do have certification publication on found in your packet. Pre-bid conference was held on Friday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, we had eight contractors and or subcontractors that were in attendance. The deadline for bid was four, four o'clock PM on Wednesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-two, which was yesterday. We did receive two bids prior to the deadline. Rec Bell and Hellman out of Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, and Warner Construction out of Frederick, Maryland. So we had two bids.
Do you have, uh, history with either one of these people?
Rec Bell and Hellman actually did the renovations to the Judicial Center. They did all that construction.
They've done this one too, haven't they?
Um, yes, in, in the Dun Building, yep. Warner Construction's been around a long time. Um, I know Washington County has done business with Warner. I don't think we have ever had a contract with Warner.
Okay, bid number one, uh, Rec Bell and Hellman, eight million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Eight million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. All right, this one is from Warner Construction. I'm sorry, Rec Bell and Hellman, where they from?
What's that?
Where they from?
Um, Chambersburg, PA, one, 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 five, Shell, Shell, S H E L L E R Avenue.
The next one is Warner Construction, and they're out of Frederick, Maryland. And their bid is seven hundred, I mean, I'm sorry, seven million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Seven million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Where was the last bid that came in?
It was Cooper out of Frederick. It was nine million seventy-six thousand.
And where do we get the money?
This is all orphan funded. We earmarked, um, orphan funding, some other discretionary orphan funding which qualifies, uh, this project.
And we backed out.
We did. That, that's all, all under the contract that we have with, um, the upgrades to the Judicial Center.
Okay. And how much is that portion for this project?
This is, the HVAC, um, as part of the Cooper bid, um, it was about a million six. The price that we got from Bolton was over, was under a million.
Right.
So, um, we, by, by doing that, and, and they understand that they have to be a sub um, for whatever contract we decide, kind of contract we decide to use. So we have saved at least, um, five to six hundred thousand dollars, just, just on the approach.
So, so we went from seven and a half, plus, I think it's probably, probably HVAC, hopefully under, considerably under a million. So let's say we're like eight point two or a little over nine million to eight point two.
Right.
Thank you.
And that falls with under orphan funding budget.
Okay. That concludes our bid opening for the Dun Building addition and renovations. Next on our agenda is board and commission interview for, uh, with Dr. Joseph De Soto, uh, candidate for Martinburg Berkeley County Library. Come up, sir. Good morning. Tell us a little bit about yourself, uh, that we haven't already read about, uh, with your, uh, lengthy resume and, uh, and also why you want to serve on the library.
Well, I'm honored to be here. Good vote for everyone. But that said, um, I am, I'm a physician scientist. I have three doctoral degrees, one in medicine, pharmacology, and another in national security. I, um, have been in a physician academic for twenty years. Five drugs, which are firmly in the market, I helped develop. And I've been in this area for twenty-five years up in Jared's, too. I still live in a house that bought a thousand dollars.
Uh-huh. So, 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 uh, why the library?
Well, since two thousand years ago in Alexandria, libraries have been the the hub where we keep our knowledge from our forefathers and pass that from generation to generation. Now, when I visited the libraries, I noticed that we could have greater utilization. And my first observation was most of the books are fiction and most have not been used. I went over to Enwood. There was not a single book on that. There was not a single book in the state. There wasn't a single book on how to pay. It has to change. Now, one size does not fit all. And so each library is a different community. I'd like to engage each community to their needs. Right now, that hasn't.
So read the community and figure out what their needs are.
Yes, and also make sure that, um, I do that within the parameters of this council, because I would represent you. And, uh, when I looked, there wasn't even a book on how to go to college. And so it was embarrassing. And so I wonder if people aren't using it. Uh, there wasn't even one student in the library in Enwood. And then I came over here, and at this library, I saw people playing cards and playing games, but no one was using it. Because as it is now, libraries aren't usable, as they can be. Second issue. I noticed that this council gives over eight hundred thousand dollars to the library. The city of Martinsburg gives a hundred thousand and change. The school board, a hundred thousand and change. Yet you only have two seats.
And we, we used to only have one. We got two recently.
And I'd like to work with the legislature and get the law changed, so that we get another seat. If you're paying most of the bill, why you have a minority?
Well, plus, we have most of the population, too.
Right. And the third is I'd like to work with the legislature to get a new building. And so those are the three things I want to say. Uh, you don't want to cause revolution. We'll gradual change to make the library more utilitarian, so that people can actually use it. The second is to work with the legislature to get council another seat, which is only fair since you're paying those. And then the third is to work on maybe funding for a new building. The building we have downtown, it's made in nineteen sixties at a time, and our population was about a third of what it is now. And so that has to change.
So, so, so I gotta ask you, if there's nobody using our libraries, why does the library need to grow?
Well, they will need to grow.
The buil- the building itself?
We could repair it, but, um, I, I think that if we make it more useful to others, there'll be more people in there. And that said, um, by giving money for the library, you're coming from the state, not county. So why local gift horse?
Yeah, we're, we're mandated to give to the library a certain amount of money.
Yeah, you're giving over eighty thousand. City of Martinsburg is giving a hundred and change.
So, and I'm, I'm just asking questions. I'll be done, and then everybody else will ask their questions. But one of the things that, that I'm not proud of is that I'm a very poor reader when it comes to books, but I can read blueprints really well. And there's a lot of people, a lot of students the same as I am, right? For some reason, they, they can't find the books that they really are interested in. So I know that there's a large amount of students out there that, that could use tutoring for reading. To me, that would be a great course to offer at the library to get our kids more involved in.
And adults.
Trying to find, yeah, me too, or seem to be senior citizen, I guess.
I don't know about that.
But, but try to, try to find a way, uh, to be able to do that. Because, you know, the one thing about reading is, um, when you read well, you have a, a wide variety of topics that you can talk about. Um, and it improves your spelling and it improves your grammar, you know, it just does so much wonderful things. That'd be one way to try to get the last.
I would, I would, um, look into that. Additionally, there are books, say, for any subject, which are made simple, where the language is written at a different level to get the message across. And that's done in all fields, whether it's science or history or English or math. And we don't have any of those books either, which goes to, to help.
Sure.
And so that was some of the things, you know, being from my record, I, I, all I've done is read all my, my research and teach. Um, so I concur with you that right now, it's not really useful to anyone unless you're homeless and want to get one. That's fair enough. I mean, people do that in tough times, but, um, but I think our population should be greater. You know, our student over here, this one, and I think he likes to sit through psychology books at his school. And, um, I imagine being in the library at high school, and there's not a single student in it, because it's not useful, it's all fiction. And, you know, if I want to get fiction, I can watch television, you know, the point. You know, and of course, any library should have some fiction, but it shouldn't be the majority of the books. And so the first, you know, a hundred thousand dollar budget for books, I start gearing that to some of the things you talked about. There are books that are introductory, are written at a different level, and sometimes even they're made up. I can't see, I can't read, unless the print's bigger, you know? And so looking at those type of issues, um, and so I'd like to expand what's offered so we engage more of the population, so there's a reason for them to do that. I mean, if I asked my mom how to make a new case, can you go to the library and find out how to make a case? It's, uh, it's, so we've grown as a county thanks to some of the guys here. But our library hasn't changed well. And so I wanted to make it more utilitarian. And then also make sure that the, I represent the county, represent this council. I, I don't want to see the library turned into, um, whether it's propaganda, whether it's critical race theory or putting in pedophilia or anything like that. I'd like to keep those type of books out, even though I'm a libertarian when it comes to ideas. I, I don't think the people in this county want to, want to see that type of, we're not New York. We're West Virginia, and I think what we have should represent the needs of our voters, the needs of this council, and the views.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
You're absolutely correct in the fact that the library is vastly underutilized. But times are changing, as the song goes, and the library has to change with it. There was an excellent article in the Smithsonian Magazine about a year ago about, um, a library, and I don't remember where it was, and how they have broadened the offerings of the library. And it was in a municipal, maybe Nashville or someplace like that. Broaden the use of the library to include the community. I'm talking art, music, you know, maybe even dance, all that kind of stuff, to get people into the library, to, to expose them to different cultures, different, different things. And, uh,
That's, that's, those are very good ideas, I think we should do.
Well, what you should do is go back in the Smithsonian Archives and read the article. It's an excellent article, and I wholeheartedly recommend it to anybody to read it because it really expands the use of the library beyond books. Because most people, as Doug said, don't read, but they do other things that could be incorporated into the library function. And just to get them into the building, and maybe then they'll find books or magazines or movies or, you know, whatever they have in there. I do have a library card, um, don't use it, uh, but I have a card. I read, but I generally have my own books. I subscribe to wide writing magazines, you know, Mother Earth News and Smithsonian, Border Culture and that sort of stuff. And my interest, as yours is chemistry and pharmacology and that kind of stuff, my interest is geology. Ain't no geology books in the library. And if they are, they're very simple, they're elementary almost, or they're so far out of date that like, yeah, man, it'd be nice to have a updated book and hear about some geology, but I get your point.
I, I think we could maybe do a lovely thing, something like that. And I'll read that art. I, I read this one, this one, so I mean, I don't read every art.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's Smithsonian, but it was an excellent art.
But that's, those are good ideas, but I, I, I guess it also rests on my point to make it more utilitarian, make it more useful.
Well, these are just what this library does. Again, you would make it fit our libraries, and maybe the main library in Hedgesville may have different programs entirely.
Right.
Of course, that, that's another weak point, is the Hedgesville Library, which is, I think the second floor is still vacant and then.
Yes.
And, you know, they need to, some money in, into that to develop the second floor.
I, I agree that one size does not fit all. And so I think the utility of the library should have its particular offerings geared for that particular audience.
Yeah. It's not just books, you know, and, you know, that's just a part of it.
I, I concur. I, I think that's a great idea, just to get people.
In the library. Then they'll find books and other, other things that the library may not have done. I'm done.
Councilperson Whitaker, Vice President Whitaker.
I'd like to thank you for coming in and wanna, you know, I mean, you have a quite the resume here. I mean, I just, uh,
It was based on insecurity, because when I was a kid, I was poor. I was one of the ones, uh, when I was in high school, as a student, had trouble reading. So to overcome that, I had, uh, you know, pick myself up on my boots perhaps, and, you know, I, I, that's who I am now. It was just based on, you know, nobody, a poor kid.
I know when I was attending Shepherd College, it was a two oh and go. I mean, I was lucky, you know?
Yeah, you know, one of my best friends, he was an orthopedic surgeon, and he's a great orthopedic surgeon. But in medical school, he was a two point O.
Yeah.
That guy, because there's a difference. I, the person who graduated top of my class, he washed out of residency his first year. There's a difference about reading about something and doing it.
And at least in my next statement, like Doug. I mean, I, I didn't do a lot of reading. I, I did enough just to make sure I, I got by. But both Doug and I, and probably Eddie over here, we have a PhD also, but ours is a post hole digger. And that's where I learned, you know, And that's where I learned, you know, how to use those things in, in my life, and, um- But, yeah, I mean, just like I said, reading through here, and I like your ideas about, you know, bringing the library up to that speed where, like Doug and I, may take a better interest in it, or more hands-on items in there that could be, you know, everybody's into the electronic computer age, and, and that's where they find their books now. They Google everything, you know?
Yeah, and that's fair enough. Um, but it's still, when you Google something, it's not as deep, it's not deep. You still need, uh, you need either to have life experiences, or to do it. And I think actually, even though I have three doctors, the truth is, is that formal education is overvalued. And, you know, we need matricians, we need carpenters, we need farmers. And, well, we've gone off the wrong track, and it's a society, because it seems that those who do the hard work are not appreciated as much as those who, you know, get the titles and don't do much. And I, you know, have to say that. And again, I'd like to see the library utilitarian for those purposes. You know, if I wanna fix my car, kinda go get a book to show me how to guide me through the steps. I mean, I would use that. Outside of changing the tires, putting in gas and oil, that's all I know. So, yeah, I, I concur, but I think this is an opportunity to, um, to make the library more utilitarian. And again, work with the legislature, change the law, I think. The council should have one more seat, and, you know, you're paying eight hundred thousand, the other two, who have the majority, are paying two hundred thousand. So you're paying four times as much. And, yeah, they, you know, you don't control it. And also, if I can get the legislature, right, to, to get us to be live, and I know all the delegates, so that's-
I think, I think years ago, that structure probably put in place, because the Markenburg Library was the only library in the county. Now we have four.
The county under leadership has, has become a very important county. Probably one, I think, outside of Charleston. I, I think this county is going to surpass that area as far as leading states. And so, I, I think we have to change, the library has to change. And, um, you know, it's just a small step, but what needs to be done. I think I can help with that small step.
Thank you very much. Councilperson Gergner?
Uh, yes, sir. First off, Dr. Soto, I'd like to thank you for your contribution, uh, to society and all of your research and the work that you've done. I know you've done a tremendous amount of work, uh, with cancer research, and there's not a person in the room that has not been affected, uh, in some way by cancer in their family or in personal. So, that's, you, you do very important work. And it does not surprise me that you've already done your research, because that's what you've done all your life. You've already done the research on the libraries.
Yeah.
Um, you, you recognize a lot of issues that most of us would not have recognized. And I, I kinda like your thought process of being able, number one, you have to be able to work with the other members of your board to get these things accomplished. And I hope that you have that ability, you know, to give and take and communicate. But to be able to take the existing libraries and make them useful. Take the, the library at Hedgesville, get it completed, make it useful. You know, our, the north end of the county is also growing at a very fast rate, with a library that's probably not as nice or as, uh, useful as what we would like to see it to be. So there is a, a lot of work to be done. And, uh, you know, of course, the, the library at Mustang High School is a community library, you know, where they're dealing with students and the community. So, it's a little, uh, unique, but, um, but I do like your thought process.
I, I think my strategy would be to, um, work with the person who's from the school. Focus on that library, just to make the point of window for that person, because that's the one that's the most obvious. And, um, and then just to get to know the other members, um, to see where they're coming from. But, I, of course, it has to be give and take. When I, you know, when I was a dean and department chair, I always did things by consensus. Uh, you know, I always hated voting. Whenever you vote, you lose half the people. You know, forty-nine percent disagreed, fifty-one, fifty-one percent agreed. So you only win, and since you lose, I like to vote consensus. That way, it's a give and take for everybody. That's kind of what my approach is to management, to administration, when possible. Sometimes you have to have a, if you give consensus, do that worst.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Tracey, you have any questions for Dr. DeSoto?
I, I greatly respect, like, your, what you want and intend to do as a board member. However, I worry about the focus on books. So, the reason why I say this is because I'm five minutes, I'm a five-minute drive away from the Hedgesville library. And the Hedgesville library is my, going in a fairly good direction with how a library should be, a library is meant to be a wealth of knowledge and something that can be accessed by all the community to pursue their interests or their passions, or just to learn about anything. And they have done so through the use of increasing their technology access. They have many, many computers, many different types of printers, both normal printers and 3D printers, and just so many technological resources. And I see a lot of traffic there because of that. I see a lot of traffic there because of these technological resources. And the internet, although it's sometimes difficult to find exactly what you're looking for, is a wealth of knowledge that is, like, just so unbelievably vast that basically anybody can have their fingertips. And current literature shows that hands-on work and hands-on experience is a better teacher than just reading. So I wonder if you would be open to an idea such as media, online media literacy, or how to find things, like classes on how to find things on the internet, or classes on current interests or topics that, that kind of oscillate between periods.
Yeah, but computers, um, are, are a good way to find things, and also you can actually play information on the computers. You might see perfect Kenball, you know, and it's, uh, written for you, and you're supposed to be here. Then the resources, that would also draw people in by having printing services. Especially for anyone, because not everyone can play with a printer. And so, that would be part of something, as I've looked at it. I have not had the opportunity to be at Hedgesville Library yet. And so, I would take a look at that, and again, engage the community, so, so. So I probably have, um, put into the newspaper that, that this library, we're gonna meet the community. We're gonna find out what the needs are, and that book, there. Does every library is in a different community, and the needs are gonna be different. And so, again, I want a library to fit those needs. And then also the sharing of ideas. It's, that's why I believe in free speech, just, we wanna share ideas. No one has the right answer, and sometimes it's-
More than one right answer.
And so, that may sound contradictory, but, you know, if I have a patient, like, well, this is probably what they have, but there may be three or four different approaches to treating that patient. And depending on who that patient is, I may use a different approach. And so, I'd like to see technology, if you have the money, they could do better than that with 3D anatomy. You know, where the students could actually each other doing surgery or something like, that's something that usually do in colleges and stuff. But, you know, whatever's useful for the community, whatever can bring them in. You know, let the comfortable company, I think those are the best.
All right. Well, thank you for applying. And, uh, we generally don't make a decision the day we interview, but I'm sure they'll be making a decision before long.
Is there vacancy on the board?
Thinking there is. Is there, anybody know? Tracy's not here.
Give us the one left by Gary.
That's what I thought, yeah. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll take a quick break, and we'll come back in ten forty-five.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is a board and commission interview with Ronald Truitt, candidate for planning commission. Sir, if you want to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself that we don't know and why you want to serve on the planning commission.
Well, I always like to start out as a boy on the son of the center man. Anyway, I am a non-true, I'm a railroader, I'm the second generation of railroaders. The first generation, my youngest son, of course, the third generation. I worked on track, I went to college to be a camp engineer, went on to the railroad. Worked my way up, of course, back then, even though you're a college, you started at the bottom and worked my way up as a machineist. I was employee of the year for three years. Became a supervisor from supervisor rank. I won the presidential award, the top honor, I had track, ability to design a every training program. From there, I became superintendent of Washington terminal, one of the biggest terminals in track guys. After that, those years, I've come back to being a mechanic engineer. I was a senior mechanic engineer for hand track for my last five years on hand track, traveling to Germany, Paris, was fortunate to see the world. I was on the board of directors, I am Episcopal church for many years, served there and that board. Like Judge, that time I worked many years in the war. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, about five years ago, I went through a divorce after 35 years. That's the downside of my career, I would say. I moved to Berkeley County about five years ago, Jefferson County, I moved here in Berkeley County. And as I see the county grow, I just, as I see some questions and, as you guys, as builders, you know, you gotta have a plan. And in that plan, you gotta have a design. And in that design, there are some times you gotta make changes. And where I like to give my input and say is, is really getting a plan on the table. You don't have any on the table, or you don't have a plan in front of you, there's too many groups today. You gotta, you gotta be able to see in front of you and down the road in the world, to understand what you're looking for. Balance, 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 is what I always say. There's so much life that you gotta keep the balance. If you don't keep that balance, you go too far to the left or to the right. I just give my years of experience of all the things I've learned and the years, I'd like to be able to help and support this county in their role.
All right, Mr. Barnhart.
How well do you know Berkeley County?
I'm learning it.
Rusty Tavern Road is a fine place, but you're kind of off.
I'm all the way up there, that's, that's the truth. I am, I am learning it quite well here lately. Do I know it as well as I should? I'm going to tell you, absolutely not. I don't know it as well as I should. I know Jefferson County like back in my hand, but Berkeley County, I've learned, there's a lot of things different here in Berkeley County compared to Jefferson County.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
There's good and bad though. If I'm honest with you, there's good and bad though.
Well, Berkeley County doesn't have zoning, per se, there's some spot zoning. The zoning is actually where the water and sewer are currently available.
Correct.
Where you're outside of that, everything is pretty much calm. Once you get into the water and sewer areas, it's Katie bar the door.
It controls the density.
Yeah. And that, you know, the planning commission is sort of a, they're a reactive organization, not a proactive organization. You know, they don't say, hey, you put this here, you don't put it there. Anywhere you can fit something, if, you know, you go by the rules of the planning commission, the subdivision rule, you can do it. If you, if you can do the rule by the rules. And I don't know if you're in favor of that or not in favor of that.
I don't know.
Are you, are you a zoning guy or?
I am a zoning guy in many ways. I am a zoning guy because that's what, you know, Jefferson County basically is, zoning.
Yeah, but Jefferson County has become anti-develop.
Yeah. Well, and that's where growth and balance you have to have. That's one thing I, I would say, there's pros and cons, as you asked me earlier about Berkeley County. That's one of the things in Jefferson County that's, that's, I would say, too tight. Those rules and regulations are a little too tight. And I'll, I'll give you a reference. My son, back then, they had impact fees. And years ago, they had a big steep impact fee there.
Fifteen grand or twelve?
Sixteen grand.
Right.
So, my son wanted to build a house. Born and raised in Jefferson County, right in that house. I went in and said, come on, he's not a builder. He's not this big builder putting 2,000 homes out. He's not putting all these homes in. He's a young man, born and raised here, bought a piece of property, 44 acres. You gotta, you gotta reduce that impact fee. He said, no. I rolled my sleeves up and went to battle.
Well, and lucky you got in a four acre tract before they changed to the eight acre minimum.
Yep.
Right? So, and that's, that's one thing that I even spoke about too, is, is if you've ever done impact fees, there's gotta be some type of credit for the people that's been there. And it doesn't matter whether it's a builder that's building 3,000 homes a year in Berkeley or Jefferson County. The homeowner, the one that's purchasing that house is paying that $15,000 fee. So, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
It's not on the back of the builder. It's always on the homeowner. And, and I do feel the same way. I've always said, if there's a, if there's a legal way to do it, there should be credits for every so many years you've been in your county because you've already paid the dues.
I totally agree. And that's basically what I did with Jefferson County, I rolled my sleeves up when I went to battle on them.
Yeah, and I was thinking, you know, naturally being in Jefferson County, you was, you was favored that when you lived there, right? But, but something must have tweaked you in a bad way to move as far west of Berkeley County as you could.
That was divorce. That was Judge Greenberg in the divorce, giving her 1.6. I'll tell you, that's one.
All right, Mr. Barnhart. Vice President Whitaker.
Again, thank, I like to thank everybody who wants to come in and try to give back to their community by volunteering. And, and I used to sit on that board before I was elected here and as well as when I was elected here as a representation. And there was a lot of things that I learned that, that I didn't think were, were right, but, or couldn't figure out why they were done in such a way. And then when you go back to the original spot, you know, there's, there's been, they said all the farmlands being, you know, gobbled up by the developers. Well, that starts with that farmer wanting to sell it. And he realized many, many years before that, he put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into growing corn and crops. And then all of a sudden, he realized where he could make some money.
Or, or he couldn't get his children to go into it.
That's, yeah. I would say that's first.
Yeah.
You can't crowd the day.
And, you know, and, and that's where, you know, I've, I've sat up here and I've had friends of mine that have come in and, you know, and just look at me personally and say, you gotta do something about this. Well, I can't afford to buy every farm in Berkeley County. I mean, I wish I could. And, and that's what happens. And, you know, we don't have zoning and it's been voted down three times. So, I don't think zoning is ever going to be a part of this county the way that, you know, you would like to think it would be. So, that's why all these rules were designed. And, and you gotta go through all these hoops to, to meet and, and, and balance out your, your project.
And they're currently rewriting.
And they're currently rewriting, yeah.
Because they were creating so many waivers. It was like, they gotta rewrite the ordinance because, you know, all these waiver requests are, you know.
And, yeah, just so many things that, like you said, in, in trying to get that balance back to the, to the center of the needle, it's going to be tough, you know, because there's been so much expansion of Berkeley County. And, and I do believe that, you know, your knowledge in, in engineering and everything would be an asset to the, to the board. And, but that's just my. And, uh, but that's just my little bit of history. Like, I didn't, when I came in for my interview back twenty years ago, I guess it was, when I first started, they never told me anything about that. And that's kinda why I'm, I'm kinda telling you on, on the process and things.
When you asked me earlier, I did it. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
What I always say, I hear everybody, you know, I drive through that Hedgesville at four o'clock, pack of lunch.
Yeah.
And I say, oh, everybody, don't complain. Pull up your straps and go to work and figure out what's going on. You can't, it's easy to complain, to tell you, but it's all wrong. But what is right?
Where's the solution?
What's the solution? How do we, how do we work around it? How do we make a balance? And I'll go right, every time, because I did that with my staff many years, is you gotta have a balance. It's not always good and it's not always, always bad. Somewhere in the middle, you gotta keep that bag.
And, and I, and I think the agencies that are outside of the, the Planning Commission, they play a part. Like the roads. Berkeley County doesn't own the roads. That's the state. So if the state says, yeah, you can do that development, you know, how, you know, they met that hurdle and they, and they jumped through it. So as long as you do the upgrades to the roads or whatever they're requiring, you know, that, that's, that's just another check mark that's been in the box to, to get it approved. And if you get all your check marks approved, we can set up here and tonight, but every time we've done that, it's always ended up in court. And then they've gotten it after money spent, bad or good money after bad, anyway. I'm sorry, I just...
Yes, sir.
And the question, or the, your question about round nine, how do you fix it? Well, the state's had that plan drawn up for thirty-seven, forty-seven years. And it, and it's up to the state to, to upgrade that road, you know?
To acquire the easements.
I live not too far from you.
Gotta kick that bear once in a while, wake him up.
Absolutely, we do. We done it just last week. We, we kicked that bear, right? Unfortunately, they felt like it was more important of the feds and, and I'm sure the federal government felt like it was more important to put lights on eighty-one than what was to take care of the traffic problem that we have. And part of, part of your engineering would come in, this is, this is something that's gonna really hinder the state of West Virginia. It's all also regulated by the state, it's also regulated by the federal government. But all the land that they put in Farm Land Protection, which is a huge amount, a thousand acres in Berkeley County, can't never be developed to put that road in, or any road. Yeah, you're talking about not, that's, you know, that's gonna be a big problem navigating around all the farm conservations.
To the highway in West Virginia.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilperson Goakner.
Yeah, number one, thanks for coming in, Ron. You know, I've talked with you several different times and you've always had concerns, you know, about the county and the growth. You know, as you said, you know, some's good, some's not good. And I think everybody up here would agree with that as well. And finding that balance, I think, is critical. You know, a lot of times, we hear a lot of stuff about the growth. But when you look at, when you look at all the components and all the people involved, when that piece of property is sold, from the, the landowner to the realtor, to the lawyer, to the developer, to the contractor, to the gas, to the excavating, the wiring, the roofing, the plumbing, the drywall, you know, all those people, there's a lot of jobs. And, and recently, I had the opportunity, my wife and I, we went to Southern West Virginia and just, we rode around, we did a little tour. And there are no jobs in places in very poor condition in Southern West Virginia. But we do have to find that balance, you know? We do want to create, you know, opportunities in this county for people to be able to stay here and live here and work here. So, um, you know, one of my questions early on was, you know, what's your opinion of growth? But I think between the questions and your answer, I've already, you know, I've heard, I've heard your answer. I think I know, you know, where you're at, is find that balance. So just thank you for coming in and your interest in making Berkeley County a better place.
I think, just, I guess, to touch a little bit on what Vice President Whitaker was saying, I mean, our, um, the only tool that you have to, um, since you don't have zoning, which, like you said, it's been voted down three times and pretty much two to one, or three, three to, two to one. Uh, and, or, um, and will it come one day?
Sure.
Because, because it's, and I'll say this, but don't take it the wrong way. You know, it's, a lot of the people that I've talked to that, that's really concerned about the growth is part of the growth. You know? And, but it's like, once they get here, close the door, right? They understand that because they moved from the east, like yourself, to the west. And then they find out sometimes they didn't move far enough, right? So part of, part of that is, is the only way you can do that is you make it harder for people to build in Berkeley County through the ordinance. But the only problem is, you're gonna do the same thing you did, that you rolled up your sleeves on your son, you're gonna price people out of the market. And generally, you don't stop people from migrating from the east to the west, it's been happening for two hundred years or longer. What you do is you price the people out that's locally and they have to move. So the very, like you said, a very fine balancing act that you gotta be careful with. And one of the, one of the prior architects in town that retired and moved somewhere else told me back twelve, fifteen years ago, everybody wanted to promote bringing business to Berkeley County back then. But they were anti-residential growth. And his simple question was, Doug, where's these employees gonna live? If you create jobs, you gotta create residential growth. And we want these people to be, work in Berkeley County and live in Berkeley County.
Yeah, and in an hour, the governor...
Built your revenue and everything else.
Yeah, the governor's gonna claim economic development.
Today, mid-time, today in Berkeley County.
And there's another development, you know?
Project.
And I, I totally agree and I said it, I said it earlier, you know, I'm not in Jefferson County, I was in the Dunes. My daughter and my middle son was going to Jefferson. It looked like the typical West Virginia high school, trailers everywhere around here. Had to fight just to get in on the school. And then they built a ninth grade complex first. It was full. The day it opened, it was full. And the time they built Washington High School, which is only about three miles apart, it was full. There's so much when you, as you said, when you bring in work and you bring in people, and that other part of that balance is, where's the schools coming from? Because the schools are sitting off the left-hand side saying, right-hand side saying, hey, we'll take care of yourself. You gotta pull them in and say, here's what's coming. You gotta look at that. Bring your schools, bring in, you know, your hospitals. Martinsburg Hospital, I was in there the other day, visiting people, it's, it's full. Didn't have a bed.
Called the emergency room one time. That's insane.
And the sad part about this is, is the state, the way they do their calculation for appropriation of the funds to the schools is, is not growth-friendly.
It's nineteen seventy. It's nineteen seventy. That's the, that has to be true.
It's insane. And then, then your, your voters turn around and, and vote to do on a levy or a bond and stuff like that. Guess what that does? It takes away revenue from the state that they have to give you. You lose revenue. It's, it's just, it's insane how, how some of that stuff works.
Chase, you got anything?
Okay, Chase is an honorary council person today from Hedgesville High School, so...
Good.
Well, Ronald? Thank you for applying. We don't make these decisions normally the same day, but, um, you understand how it works, that's for sure. As being a mechanical engineer, I expect you to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, next on our agenda is Tracy Gilmes, grant administrator bid recommendation for RFP, Training and Technical Assistant Targeted Violence Toward Terrorism Prevention.
There's two bid recommendations under the same grant for fiscal year twenty-two, Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant Program through the Department of Homeland Security. This one is for Training and Technical Assistance for Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention. The RFP was published in the Journal on November second, twenty-twenty-two, on the county website and circulated through social media. With sealed bids accepted until Wednesday, November ninth, twenty-twenty-two, at four P M. One sealed bid was received and opened during the regular county council meeting at ten oh five on Thursday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-two, from the National Policing Institute in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. The recommendation is, the bid submitted from National Policing Institute met all of the criteria outlined in the RFP. Therefore, I request the bid from the National Policing Institute in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents be accepted.
That's quite a training program.
It, it is, it is a monthly, um, it's, they're kind of like a consultant training. So there's going to be between the police department and the National Policing Institute is going to be a monthly conversation and Randy's Department of Emergency Management, a conversation. And they're going to help to set up, um, a countywide plan for targeted violence, whether in the schools or from just a citizen, um, a countywide plan over the next two years.
Does this include City of Martinsburg?
A countywide plan, I, I would, I would say yes, since they're part of the county, but...
You don't know. Yeah. It's a matter of coordination between the city and county.
This is a hundred percent grant, aren't they?
Yes.
There's no match.
No, no match.
And I, I guess, Mr. Davis, since you're here, I mean, the one thing that we keep asking is, is overtime. Some of the grants provide overtime.
This particular consultant, um, there should not be any overtime with the individuals that, um, will be instrumental in the plan and some of the training. It would happen during the workday, during regular business hours. There shouldn't be any overtime with this.
So we know that the sheriff overspent the overtime budget last year, which we had to work on that. We know the situation, we're not looking good this year. My only concern on all the training that we're doing is, where's the overtime gonna be? Because typically, if you take someone off the street, somebody working overtime to fill that void. And I, I just think that we need to be very cautious about...
We have been, um, April, Elizabeth and myself have met with the sheriff, with Lieutenant Rapin and Captain Gardner on how they schedule and learning how they do when somebody is out for training. So that we can, when we come and we say, here's how much this grant is gonna be, it's a hundred percent. Well, we'll know, like for the SWAT team, we know for the training that they have coming up and that's paid for through this grant, we know how much overtime it will cost for those fourteen individuals, depending on what day of the week that training falls. April has it from a range of like five thousand to ten thousand. And that's just those fourteen people. They said it was hard for, for them to predict how many people they would need to cover those shifts until it happens. So we'll have a first go-round and we'll have more to be able to present a better, clear picture of when we come to you with a grant proposal that here's how much overtime is estimated that you're looking at.
So I guess, Tracy, one of the things that I would be curious, Mr. Davis, is the grants that have been approved for training for the Sheriff's Department or anybody else, has those numbers been provided to Mr. Davis because someone may need to have their budget refused?
Um, they have not prior to this. It was not something that was on my radar. But now that we were made aware of it, it is, it is consciously on our radar that when we come and do a proposal, that we have those numbers as well.
Okay.
And I can tell you that I just, been exchanging emails this morning, just with the sheriff. I have him coming in and we'll have us next Thursday morning. We'll try to talk exactly about that.
Okay.
I guess the sheriff's in favor of this.
Yes.
All right, entertain a motion for the recommendation.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the Department of Homeland Security Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant. In the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
We're not doing the grant, we're actually approving the contract.
This is approving the contract, yeah.
Okay, approve the contract.
Second?
For the recommendation. All right, we have a motion for one a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, hold, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Now you have the bid recommendation, RFP, Domestic Terrorism Ideology Groups, Symbols and Tactics Training Classes.
This is under the same grant, Department of Homeland Security Fiscal Year Twenty-twenty-two Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant for Training for Domestic Terrorism Ideologies, Groups, Symbols and Tactics. The RFP was published in the Journal on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, on the county website and circulated through social media. With sealed bids accepted, closing on Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at four P M. One, one sealed bid was opened during the regular county council meeting at ten oh five A M. on November seventeenth from Proactive Consulting in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. The recommendation, the submitted bid from Proactive Consulting met all the criteria outlined in the RFP. Therefore, I request the bid from Proactive Consulting in the amount of nineteen thousand for a training class on domestic terrorism ideologies, groups, symbols, and tactics for law enforcement officers and public safety professionals. And this grant, this particular class won't happen until after September first, or October first, twenty-twenty-three. It's in the second half of February.
Okay. Any questions for Tracy on this one?
So some of my questions on this are, how, how often these trainings will take place going forward? This is just like a one-time. And also, where the information on the training, like, the information on how these ideologies, groups, like, display their symbols and like their tactics, where that information is coming from? If it's coming from the anti-inflammation league, the Southern Republican Center, or the Department of...
This particular, um, uh, Proactive Consulting, his name is Rob Finch, and he is categorized as an expert on, um, on these, on this subject. Um, and he goes to just about every university in every state. Um, he was, uh, we researched him after he had submitted his, um, his bid, um, to find out if he was, um, worthy or not, or, or, or educated.
Checking his credentials.
Yeah, we were checking his credentials. Um, the other, the National Policing Institute, those trainings and technical assistance, that'll be every month. Mr. Finch is also doing a training, um, on hate groups in the first year of the grant, which is this year, through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three.
All right, any other questions? entertain a motion on the recommendation.
President, I move we accept the recommendation from, uh, grant staff on Department of Homeland Security F Y twenty-two Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention. Did I get that one right? Yeah.
Okay.
And accept that, um, that grant program for the amount of nineteen thousand?
Accept the contract.
Accept the contract for nineteen thousand.
Second?
Have a motion for a second. Any discussion? If not, hold, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Anthony, let's go ahead and go with you, since Matthew's not here. We expecting anybody to be here?
I don't think anybody's with you yet.
Okay. All right, so Anthony, you have, and by the way, when I'm, when I'm thinking about it, I need some time with you after the... you after the meeting, so we can work on the later days. Okay? So we have in front of us Omega's contract assignment. Tell us what's going on there.
So the council has a contract for government relations with West Virginia Oil Marketers and Brewers Association, commonly known as Omega. And you've utilized two registered lobbyists that represented the council in Charleston, being Summer Barrett and Hall. Those two are leaving Omega and starting another firm called Access Strategies LLC. Omega agreed to take that contract and assign it over to the new company. The RFQ that went out two years ago required that any assignment, changing the party, not changing actual underlying terms, needed to be approved by this body. So that's just where you whether to assign the contract from Omega to Access Strategies.
Okay. And I have any questions for Anthony?
When does, how long is this contract with, to June?
Well, the new contract that you just approved with Omega takes effect November, December 1st. So this would run December 1st of this year through the end of November next year.
And Mr. Davis, your feelings about this assignment?
You know, the contract, as you know, the original contract and the two subsequent extensions was Omega and is signed by Omega. When I first learned about this, my only question was, did they have, you know, some type of covenant not to compete? But in the absence of, you know, that, and I've been told that they don't, and the fact that Omega's willing to sign the contract to Mrs. Barrett and Mr. Hall, who've been kind of the primary contacts, saying, if the council so chooses, I don't have an issue with that.
All right. Entertaining a motion on the Omega contract assignment. That's discussed.
Still waiting.
You have a motion for one? Can we have a second? Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Anthony. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Matthew Olmstead, a candidate for the Roundhouse Authority.
Who?
Matthew Olmstead.
Names for you.
Wow. We need to be, we need to watch this guy. So tell us a little bit about yourself, Matt. We know you're rich with history and...
Well, I was born in Romney, West Virginia, Hampshire County native. Grew up on a dairy farm called Oak Hill Farm along the Potomac River. It's canal from our place. When I was five, I almost got ran over by a railroad train, Amtrak. The Amtrak engineer was so scared that the, I thought he hit me. He stopped the train, and my dad said, wait as a ghost. And I loved to play on the tracks. I grew up along the railroad, and my granddaddy was a, my mom's dad was an engineer for B&amp;O. And I played on the tracks a lot when I was a little boy, and not good. I was watching my dad plow the fields, and the Amtrak train came up real quiet. They travel quieter.
They're a lot quieter. What'd you think?
Not quiet. Yeah, and I stepped away right at the last minute. I was five. Probably my dad was probably prosecuted for neglect these days, but I have always loved trains. We sold our candy bars from raffles at school to the caboose guys in the caboose on the way home from school. So when I moved to Martinsburg in 1998 as an intern for the Journal newspaper, I, of course, took immediate interest in what was going on at the Roundhouse. And one of the first assignments I had when I came back as a full-time reporter was covering Ken Martin and his Roundhouse Authority Board that he had put together in the years after, whenever I came back from the internship. I came back full-time in 99, 2000, 2001. And so I covered their meetings as a reporter, starting back in, I think it was 2000, actually. States all run together, but I would get that assignment and heard a lot of stories about the Roundhouse over the years and was personally always interested, always interested in what Kim and everybody was doing there and on a personal level. What it was, you know, I, so it's always been something that I personally, because I, at WVU, I majored in histories. I always liked history generally. So as times gone by, things change, and we take on new challenges in life professionally. And I have been fortunate to come to work here for the county. It's been a real pleasure, almost two years coming in January, for anybody to keep track.
So...
But anyway.
What's your vision of the Roundhouse?
It is an absolute cog in a, in a rever, a rippling of tax base growth potential, just like it was when it came in 18, the 40s and 50s, when that was built. It became a ripple of economic boom for Martinsburg. It can obviously become a mini-boom, might not be as big as it was when it first came, but on a percentage scale, but it can still be very much a boom for increasing the tax base of all the neighborhood areas, all the commercial areas around that, around that property. The studies, the experts, the consultants have all come in, and those recommendations on recommended uses have been on the books since 2005. And those recommendations are still being carried out today. The plans have never veered off from those visions. And that includes the market concept you might have heard about and the amphitheater project that's been envisioned at the ruins. Those visions were, uses were part of the original findings back in 2005. So there was, Shane Farthing at City of Martinsburg stopped me on Saturday at the Christmas market thing that they had downtown, which was a great event, and said, is there any way we can get a Ferris wheel? One of the original drawings conceptual was to put a Ferris wheel, a giant Ferris wheel permanently at the Roundhouse grounds. That would be an attraction, amusement attractions for families and children, and maybe give you vistas of Martinsburg and really kind of bring people there on a regular basis to come back and have something enjoyable with their family. As simple as that.
How big is the Roundhouse property?
Approximately 13 acres.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's the fenced-in area that's, that was, the chair was successful in communicating with the Amtrak to get the fence no charge to the Roundhouse. That doesn't fully define the boundaries of the Roundhouse property. It extends further south beyond that fence to the East Burke Street Bridge area.
How do you feel about the City of Martinsburg's involvement with that?
Well, it's exciting to see. Their allocation of funds, 125,000 that they allocated within the last 12 months was the first substantial commitment that I can recall, you know, in the 20-some years that I'm familiar with the property. And the changing perspectives there at City Hall are welcomed. The late Harriet Johnson was really the first mayor who really expressed real, true, sincere interest in trying to bring that site back to life and part of the tax base. And I really do believe it can be a tremendous addition to the tax base of, an impact, an impact on the tax base of Martinsburg, Berkeley County, and I think that's...
And the future, I think, is dependent on accessibility of the Roundhouse.
Absolutely.
Right. And...
The current accessibility is, you know...
There's been some real, there's been some real serious, very genuine dialogue engagement between City Hall and the Division of Highways and the Roundhouse to reconfigure the one entrance off of Queen Street directly into the property. I can't discuss some of the other things that were mentioned by various people, but there was some real vision there. The city has indicated some real interest in making some changes that would dramatically improve the access directly from Queen Street.
I think the city's been focused in right there on Martin Street, doing a lot of modernization. The Apollo's doing a lot of work. I think, I think before long, in order for the Roundhouse to be successful, you're going to have to also have parking facilities somehow.
Right.
Somehow it's got to happen.
Right.
And...
And there's a real opportunity, you know, I'm a city resident. Obviously, I'm very, you know, committed to supporting the causes of the county. I work for the county. It's obviously my priority, but I can't, I can't dismiss, you know, the opportunity to really, you know, be a bridge for, you know, the city and the county to kind of collaborate and work on this project, you know? And I really have been encouraging, as much as I can, as a city resident, my representatives at City Hall to say, hey, you know, you guys can come on in, you know, join in and be a part, you know, be a real stronger voice in what you want to see here and what you want to do here. Because I really do see the city eventually at one, at some point, taking the lead and kind of taking this, I don't want to say taking it off our plate here at the county, but kind of taking more of a stronger role and taking the lead.
Coming to the table.
And it is my understanding that the mayor is appointing on the agenda, maybe tonight, to his two additional people that Mr. Davis, I think, outlined. It was a total of three appointments the mayor was going to make, and so he'll have three appointments, I think, by the end of...
And you're not one of them.
No, no, I did not apply.
All right. You done, Mr. Bonner?
Yes, sir.
Where? You know, is that the bag?
I think so. I think...
And you still will listen to him.
Are you sure? Well, you know, I just found out something new, that I almost got run over by a train.
That's a perfect country western...
That is, and...
Yeah.
Don't ask me to start singing. But Matt almost got run over by a reindeer.
Yeah.
Matt, thank you for all your hard work.
Well, I see you're already committed there. You serve as, currently serve as vice chair.
Yeah.
Councilperson Boyd has served as chairperson of the board for quite a while, so I know that we have quite a bit of interest and support there. I know your love for history. I've seen you work all of those historic agencies throughout the last year with pulling the 250th birthday together. You pulled a lot of those historic groups together and kind of working together.
And we're keeping them together.
Yeah.
And we're keeping them together. And the Heritage Fair that we're looking at doing at the Roundhouse in the spring keeps them together and keeps them together to work on the underlying goal, of course, since in support of the museum, which you all are very supportive of, or indicated you all, where you put money, you made financial commitments on paper there and your layout of the paperwork there in this sweet street head. But, you know, we're working very hard to keep everyone together and, because otherwise, you know, there's a lot of potential, a lot of heritage tourism potential in this, in this community, in this region. They spend more money than any other type of tourist. The Roundhouse is very much part of that. And one other quick thing, Mr. Randall Reed Smith, the curator, the relationship we have is only increasing, and he is a very, very strong supporter of the Roundhouse property. And anything we can do to keep that momentum going.
I would think that if that becomes a more of a readily available site to tour historically, thinking what a great place to maybe put a hotel, it's 13 acres, right? Imagine how many train enthusiasts would come there just to see that.
Tremendous. Tremendous opportunity.
The tracks are still being used and, you know, it just...
I tell you what, I could envision, you know, same thing up in St. Strolesburg, right outside of Lancaster. I've been to that facility up there that actually still does and can rebuild a steam engine from the ground up. And a friend of mine, who got me a personal tour of that place, I'm going to call him and ask him if, you know, if they ever get any extra items that they would want to have on permanent display, we have a place for them.
Yeah.
You know?
There's lots of room there.
I'd love to see a Ferris wheel.
Yeah.
That'd be beautiful.
Well, I think it would give you vistas of the city. It would obviously be a year, it could be a year-round attraction, you know? And amusements are, you know, they had the bandstand at the square. You might have heard about the bandstand square years ago. Everybody's heard about that. You know, amusement is part of, it's very simple. It's very simple. It's not complex, but it can really bring people, you know? And a six-digit Ferris wheel is untold. I guess it would be a matter of finding a company willing to put their name on it, and we could call it the blank Ferris wheel. But it could be a real attraction to just bring tourists right off Y-81, let's take a break, oh, they got a Ferris wheel, let's go downtown and ride the Ferris wheel. Before you know it, they're staying the night here, and they're spending a couple days here.
Yeah, that could do wonders for downtown Martinsburg.
Visiting, thanks.
Get rid of all those empty storefronts.
Right. And it's just something as simple as that. And of course, you have the maintenance of the Ferris wheel, and then you have, you know, you have issues, but you'd have to work through some of those things. But just something that's simple, and the fact it was one of the designs years ago as part of the vision for the property, it's kind of interesting to me.
Did you have something to say?
I do.
You're in trouble.
Question about the historical aspect. I've been on a tour of the Roundhouse.
Very good.
Actually, kind of recently, it's a tour.
Very good.
And the way that a lot of the artifacts are displayed is, in my opinion, as somebody else who really loves history and really loves learning about the area that I'm in, it kind of left something to be desired.
Yes.
So I guess I have some questions on how you would want to revitalize like the education or like the learning or heritage aspect of the Roundhouse, kind of putting the history more on display, I guess.
There is a challenge there. And with every display and every artifact display of any kind of museum or any kind of historical space, you have climate control, heating, air conditioning, ventilation, dust control, lighting, all of these things. Ideally, ideally, there could be some significant, you know, capital improvements done there to improve that display, no question about it. Obviously, everything takes money. And, you know, what the current project is, is to create a revenue generating part of the, of the, of the property to kind of start bringing in revenue and be self-sustaining. So, you know, once you get that little cog in the wheel, then you can go to putting out and purchasing maybe some better cases, more, you know, better display lighting, et cetera. So maybe steps, I guess, is the answer. But yes, you make a very good and valid point about the need to improve that display.
Okay. Done, Chase?
Okay.
All right. This is, this is a time-sensitive, members slot, and Councilperson Boyd would like to get this done today, so...
That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got it. Matt, this is amazing they're going with you. You got a, you got a, you got a, you got a motion, you got a second? All we need to do is vote.
It could be time.
It could be. You with me, Eddie? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries, four to zero.
We all should have hesitated on that.
Yeah, just a little.
I will do my best.
I know you will, Matt. Thank you. All right. Moving on to Mr. Davis, State Budget Revision Number Six Fund, 001.
Yes, sir. In your package is State Budget Revision Number Six, which includes all of November and the first week in December. We've received 31 checks totaling $371,197. Kind of of note, we did reimburse ourselves $250,869 in ARPA funding for eligible projects that we had prepaid. Information Technology received payments in the amount of $16,509. Information Technology received payments in the amount of $16,509. Sheriff's Department received overtime reimbursement, which you touched on briefly, in the amount of $22,643. We did receive a payment from the Fire Board for $2,500 to the emergency services for printing costs associated with the House on Wheels educational material. We had, our day report center had been involved in a third-party accident involving another person that was charged with the accident. We did a subbrigade or the risk group did a subbrigade against the other driver, so we've received not only payment of the claim, but also the $1,000 deductible. So I'm recommending that as far as disbursements goes, as you know, the elected circuit clerk and county clerk will be leaving office at the, at the end of this year. We do need to adjust the salaries, not only to reflect the increase in the elected official's salaries that was approved by the state auditor's office earlier this fiscal year, but also the 15% employee pay raise that the council provided in August of this year. Also, if you'll remember, the county clerk was before you, before the general election, requesting that she be allowed to increase poll worker compensation from $200 a day to $300 a day. That amount was not included in the original budget, so as a result of that increase, she's going to have a, Department 413 is going to have a deficit in contracted services of about $80,000. So I'm recommending that we put $85,000 in contracted services. There's always one or two poll workers that straggle, and that'll give, give that account more than enough money. Of course, the $22,643 we go into the Sheriff's Department overtime, $16,509 we put into IT, $2,500 we go back into supplies and materials for emergency services, the $1,000 we go back into the central garage for professional services for parts, and then the remainder we build like the capital outlay B equals the capital outlay B.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? All right. Entertainer motion on State Budget Revision Number Six Fund, zero, zero, one.
Move to approve.
Have a motion on for a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Davis, you have Berkeley County project updates.
Yes, sir. Just some, some house cleaning matters. We've put a pretty good dent in this since, since March. We've been working on, on projects. As you know, we identified about $58.7 million of projects that we would like to do over the next several years. The top part has already been taken care of through the American Rescue Play and Act funds. We received $23,147,570 in ARCA funding. That money has been committed for a variety of building projects, also for the expansion of the Whorehouse Farm, the development of the North Berkeley Park, as well as some, some infrastructure projects for the water department. As you know, we did commit general funding coal severance funds prior to this fiscal year through encumbrances, which includes the $1,060,000 for 750 Baltimore Street. You are scheduled next Thursday afternoon to tour 750 Baltimore Street, so you can see the roof. And the roof's about three quarters of the way completed.
How done is the extension service?
The extension service, they're actually waiting for that portion of the roof to be fully sealed up so they can finish drywall and get sealinged. We've already contracted for the flooring. The windows have been replaced by, by Berkeley glass, so that project's moving along well, and you'll see that next week, as well as the central, central garage.
So what do you think, where the extension service will be ready?
Probably early next year.
I think, yeah, February, May.
Yeah, we're looking late January, early February. Also, 126 West King Street, which is the demolition of that building, that building is completely down now. It's just a matter of hauling away the debris. Of course, the, we've subcontracted with the city of Martinsburg on the Frog Hollow Route Nine Trail, and we have a contract with CEC on the Inwood Park. I think Councilperson Gokenhour and I are meeting with CEC representatives next Wednesday to talk a little bit more about that project. As far as the tax-exempt bank qualified funds, we did sell $10 million worth of bonds last Thursday at an interest rate of 4.03%. That money will go to the LED lighting project. We will be reimbursing ourselves quite a bit, about a million dollars of funding from that because we've, we've out, we've already forward funded some of that money. The remaining, the remaining funds will go towards 520 South Raleigh Street, which is the addition to the day report center. What I really need some guidance on you from is the supplemental funding projects, which is listed at the very bottom of the, of the spreadsheet that I've given you. To the, to the right in the mustard-colored column, just, you know, we have designated, we had, as, as part of the early discussion, we designated $250,000 for the falling waters, waterfall, which we've decided not to pursue. Also, $100,000 from Morgan Park, which at this time, we've decided not to pursue. We have earmarked $1 million for development of the Inwood Park, which the council has agreed through consensus, would most likely come out of quality of life, as well as the $500,000 for the, the actual development of the Frog Hollow Route Nine trail. On August the 15th of 2022, this council voted to provide $200,000 to American Legion Baseball for some artificial turf for the infield. That money to come out of quality of life. Also, on October 20th, 2022, you allocated $300,000 to the, to the airport for a number of projects out there, with the majority of that going towards next year's airshow. And you also authorized $250,000 to the Apollo Theater to assist with some of the, the exterior work that needs to be done, specifically the marquee. That money, again, for both of those projects will be coming out of quality of life. Under the supplemental miscellaneous funding projects, we had started out with a total of $996,135,000 of projects identified. If you take the $300,000 out for the airport, the $245,000 out for the hollow, and the $200,000 out for Legion, that gives you remaining projects to be funded in the amount of $251,135. Many of the projects that we had identified that we would like to do with supplemental funding, particularly as it relates to senior services, we've already taken care of. For example, they identified the need for all-new flooring in the, in the basement area. We've already, that's our building, we, we took care of that. But I do know that in, in some of the, many of the projects that are in here, I've already talked to the, the agency heads, they intend on putting them in next year's budgets. Budget packets for fiscal year 23, 24 went out earlier this week, so we'll start getting some of those back, you know, pretty quickly, particularly for the outside agencies. Councilperson Gokenhour and I did have a discussion regarding the $6,000 for Historic Morgan Cabin. It's my understanding, although no decision had, had ever been made, that as part of the 250th anniversary, they were gonna do some upgrades to that area and we were gonna, we were gonna reimburse them. We've never, we've never done that. So I just need some, some direction from, from the council.
Yes, sir.
Of the remaining projects, are there any that, that you wanted to do immediately, or do you want to let most of them go until next budget cycle?
Well, I thi, I think we do need to do the Morgan Cabin, because I know that they had no money to do that, so.
Oh, that, and they, the money they had, that they had worked for, they put in to the cabin in preparation of our 250th birthday celebration. They played a very critical role in that celebration, so I'd really like to see them get their funds.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion on that, Mr. Gokenhour, if you would, please?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that the Historic Morgan Cabin received a lot of amount of $6,000.
Second. So have a motion on for a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And Mr. Davis, the Roundhouse for $38,085, you never gave that to them?
We received correspondence. They did October 27th, 2022.
That was.
From HDBOY chairman requesting $38,085 to cover their payment to Alphen Associates for the design bid and construction administrative services for the elevator stairs and concrete, but the council has never made a decision on the allocation.
But that's holding up the whole project, right?
It is.
That's where it's questionable, but, yeah.
And I know you had some.
Yeah, I have some hard feelings about it.
Hard feelings and some questions about that, but it, no decision by this.
But it's holding up the whole HVAC and all that stuff. I'd say we need to do that, get that project going so that we can get some history displayed properly and stuff, and, because that's a big, that's a pretty big grant. And that it be, the lesson to be learned.
Would you like a motion, sir?
I would.
I'd like to move that the $38,085 be submitted or given to the Roundhouse authority for the purpose of obtaining the engineering services? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think it's the way they have to be bitted out or something. All right. So motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Now, if the council has no objections for these two projects, our revenue stream with coal severance has been a little stronger than what we had expected. If it's okay with you, I'll take that funding for these two projects out of coal severance rather than the general fund.
Sure, that sounds fine.
Because these are one-time payments that would not be recurring.
Um, I mean, all these ones really need the money that we, we put here. And these were amounts, Mr. Davis, that we, we discussed them. That's what our goal was, right?
Well, those were amounts that the council had indicated through discussion that was above and beyond their fiscal year 22, 23 allocation.
But senior services, you're saying we can scratch through that?
Senior services have been taken care of.
All right. Main Street Martinsburg, I remember they wanted to hire another person or something?
Yes, sir. That was for a position.
Mm-hmm. Boys and Girls Club is basically trying to find some sponsors for some kids for $1,000 a piece or something, I believe. Trans Authority, I can't remember what they needed $60,000 for. Is there any other activity we want to do there, or, I mean?
My recommendation would be letting go until next fiscal year as part of their request, but that's, again, that's your decision to make.
I, I know that, you know, we've, we've had people come before us and speak on these, all these different agencies that are trying to do work in this community, and I know one of them really struggles, and that's the council. They do a tremendous amount of work with children who are in a bad situation.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know exact, I don't remember today exactly what their needs were, but I, I'd really like to see us be able to assist them at the minimal amount of money.
How about, I've got a recommendation. I mean, we all felt that each one of these agencies was important to us.
Yes.
All right? Excluding the ones that we've already funded, excluding the one senior center that we always take care of, one of my consideration is why don't we go ahead and fund them 50%, let them apply for the other 50% next year? Fund them all, 50%.
I'm good with that.
They gonna give you tremors, Mr. Davis?
Everything you do gives.
Well, I mean, it's, I, I just feel that these are, these are nonprofits that do so much for the community, and, and for, we always talk about getting a big bang for the buck. Main Street Martinsburg, without a one-cent sales tax for the county, it doesn't really help us, but it helps the quality of life, so.
How about a fight for next week? I'll, I'll take, I'll take Morgan Cabin out and Roundhouse, because you did vote on that today.
Right.
I'll take the remaining ones and give you a recommendation in minimal form of, of how much it is and what the total is, and then you can take action next year.
All right, that sounds good. Let's, let's do that. I, I, if nobody has any hard feelings, I'd like to see, you know, 50% of what we felt when we were doing the budget should be allocated now, until they get started. Some of them may not be enough to do, I know 50% of the Main Street's not gonna be enough to hire somebody, but then again, we're halfway through the year. It could, all right? All right.
That's all I have.
Chase, you got anything to say about spending this kind of money?
It gives even tremors.
Yeah. Wait till he comes back to school and gives his report, yeah.
Spending money, spending money.
You make sure you tell Grace, call my, her uncle Doug said hi. All right? Any items from the public? There is no reason for executive session, that I know of?
No, we have none today.
Tom, you got anything?
I do. Please, this is council, I just need three more signatures to.
Again?
Pray tell that this is the last ones for the, like.
Okay.
One last ride in, let me, three signatures.
All right.
Did he sign this that we're talking about, or is that?
He already had.
They picked that up.
All right.
Do you have it?
So, we'll do it right after session. I mean, it's nothing I have to do voting on, so. So, all right, no reason for executive session, Mr. Barnhart, if you did honor.
Well, Mr. President, I would be honored, mostly honored anyway, to motion to get the heck out of here.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We are.